Okay. I know you can see these ads and stuff, so sorry for that, but. The reason I'm doing this video is I saw it on the news this morning and I was wondering when they were gonna say anything about it. But I read this and you know, we've had like issues with race um in schools and then. You know, we've heard uh that it has happened in various places, but. More recently, it has happened happening a lot in. Politics and that is what is really scary. It's one thing when it happens like on the street. Or if it happens in a smaller institution, but when it starts to spill over or. It's evident that you can see a lot of it and it's it's now it's so blatant. That you can see a lot of it in in this situation here like in in city hall and. Um on the podiums of politicians mouth uh when they do speeches. And here it says LA City Council President resigns from post over racist comments. But if you hear the things that she said. You would know why she should resign. She should have never been in that position and. A lot of this, this is where it's called system, a systematic. Or a system of race racism and it has to come from, it starts from the top. It's not just the little incidences you see in the communities and then and on the streets alone because that is. That is what happens when it's so prevalent in these institutions and at the top. Because whatever is allowed at the top, it it then. Uh spreads to other areas, um other institutions and organizations and it's everywhere. But it's now like it's accepted. What's scary is now it's accepted in politics. And there's where is the? The uh consequence for it and so that's the thing and these are the people who you would wanna, you you're thinking, can you trust them? To lead the country or to do the work of the greater good or helping communities. And the communities you're helping are the people that you're you're hating on. So. This was in a leaked audio clip. And it was from October twenty twenty one that Nuri Martinez can be heard making disparaging comments about colleagues. Colleagues, the colleagues, a colleague's black son. And so she's actually talking about somebody she works with, which is really disturbing because. These are people that you're working with that also have a lot of this. Display of hate that comes out. And you know, my question is how was she allowed to get that far up? To get that position. So that's the thing. And so you'd have to ask that question about a lot of other people that are in positions. Of power where they're allowed to pretty much um determine what happens in the lives of many people. Which is very scary. So the president of the LA City Council. Has stepped down after a series of bombshell audio clips that were captured captured of her calling a colleague's black son. A little monkey among other racist disparaging remarks. So Nuri Martinez apologized. This is what she did recently for October twenty twenty one remarks during a meeting. Over redistricting, redistricting with fellow council members Kevin De Leon. And Gil Sidelio and the labor leader Ron Herrera. And stepped down as a city council president on Monday. So I take responsibility for what I said. And there are no excuse for those comments. I'm sorry, so sorry, she said on Monday. But it's who she's saying this about and to and sometimes sorry doesn't always fix everything. So in the end, it is not my apologies that matter the most. It will be the actions that I take this day forward. So I hope that you will give me an opportunity to make amends, she added. Therefore, effective immediately, I'm resigning as president of LA City Council. So she was the president. Of LA City Council, you guys. So for her to have that that high of a position. To say things like that and be in that position of power is it it. It says a lot about how the country is run. When you have people like that that are in those type of positions and that's the tone that you said. And so it goes on to say that she did not say that she would resign her council seat though. So think about it. She's not resigning her council seat, but she's resigning her position. So. It's left up to whoever's over picking these people for these seats to make the full decision. On what they're gonna choose to do. And so. It's the people that make the community, the people that vote and the people that that want certain individuals in these seats. To help the communities and the people that you're helping in the communities are the people that you're making the remarks about. And so that's. That's the important thing to look at is the trust would be gone because now they don't trust that you're really gonna be in. Out looking out for their best interest if you harbor so much hatred. Or if you harbor so much prejudice against other people that you you feel are beneath you. So the leak of the audio clips had thrown LA city politics in turmoil on Sunday. Providing a rare look inside the political process in America's second largest city. Ahead of November's may mayoral election. And so in the leaked audio, the Latino leaders can be heard. Uh denigrating various groups of constituents as they try to determine how to use the redistricting process. To secure more political power for Latinos and keep political rivals from making perceived gains. So if you heard how I said that, it's sad because. We know that this is, you know, we as in the people that have been here in LA or in LA county know that a lot of this is going on. We're not unfamiliar with this kind of behavior. Um it's just that this came out and it was leaked. And apparently by someone who probably wanted people to know just who they were. Were trusting or entrusting their city with. So all the politicians involved are Democrats. And so they wanted you to know that as well. So it wasn't immediately clear who made the recording. So the audio was leaked on Reddit by a user who has since been suspended. So the person suspended who leaked the audio. And the LA Times reported this. So the series of clips has been published by NOC LA. A nonprofit community news platform. So. Just as you have problems on the the right, you will have problems on the left. With politicians and various people, different walks of life, different individuals. Um that harbor certain beliefs or prejudices. So on the recording, Martini Martinez. Referred to fellow council member Mike Bonin, who is white and represents the city's eleventh district as a little bitch. Okay, this is pretty, uh sorry if this offends anybody, but some of these words that these people were saying about people were really bad. Um so just disclaimer, okay, so she can be heard talking about an incident with Bonin's two-year-old black son. Who was about bouncing off what was apparently a parade float and she. Said that he he was difficult to control. And so. There's more here. So it was also said in um. A Spanish term, there is nothing you can do to control him, she said, going on to say in Span- Spanish. But they say chenguito, uh which means in English, he looks like a little monkey. And so it's like black and brown on this float, she says also. And she added that she believed the boy needs a beat down. So let me take him around the corner and I'll bring him back, she said, breaking into laughter after a few seconds. So De Leon, a powerful player in California politics who unsuccessfully ran for LA mayor. In the senate and represents part of East LA, including the Boyle Heights neighborhood. Said Bonin handling of the child was similar when nursery or or when Nuri brings her little yard bag. Uh or Louis Vuitton bag. Okay, and so I guess this is them constantly. So this is Mike Bonin. Uh whose son Nuri Martinez made disparaging comments about. Uh who who had the son that Nuri Martinez made the disparaging comments about. So this is the guy. And uh she's referring to his son. So on the LA District Attorney, uh George Gascon, Martinez said. Fuck that guy. He's with the blacks. Okay, so. In another recording that was heard, council members are heard talking about the Korean or her Koreatown neighborhood. Which is now predominantly Latino. I see a lot of little short dark people. Martin, this is. Coming out of Martinez's mouth, Nuri Martinez. And she said apparently referring to indigenous. Oaxican immigrants. Um and so someone. Someone else in the room heard the referring um. To them as little Oaxican Korean, the little ones. Martinez breaks into laughter adding. I don't know what village they came from and how they got here. So she also said she feared a suspension of council member Mark Ridley Thomas. Who had been in the public eye for charges of bribery and conspiracy would prompt black constituents to come after us. And so De Leon and Herrera can also be heard speaking dismissively about of the black voters. So twenty-five blacks are shouting, Sidelio says, at the Martinez, at which Martinez laughs again. But they shout like they're two hundred and fifty, adds De Leon. So after the release of the tape on Sunday, polit- politicians and civil rights group called on the council members. That were involved in these leaked tapes or audios to resign because of the comments they were making and how they were carrying on. During that meeting. Um. So which which makes a lot of sense. So after the release of the tape on Sunday, politicians, they called on them to resign. So Bonin called Martinez remarks vile and appallant and utterly disgraceful. We love our son and beautiful joyous child. Our family is hurting today. No child should ever be subject to such racist. Um comments. Um. Especially from a public official. So Bonin's family uh said this in a statement. And so it hurts that one of our sons' earliest encounters with overt racism. Comes from some of the most powerful public officials in LA. That's what I was saying. These are people. These are not like people that are in a neighborhood that you would say, oh, that's the lady's next door neighbor. She cussed her out and called her all kinds of racial names, blah blah. Those are people that they don't hold any political seats. You know, you hear all these crazy wild stories about, you know, overt racism, but it's coming from like people on the street, but never. People that are sitting in these high such a high seats that you that you're trusting. To run a city or to run a country or to run, you know, some kind of political arena where. They have to make decisions for maybe thousands or millions of people. It's uh it's sad. It's scary too. And so it's the same thing like, you know, and but this is not anything new. Let me say this. I'm not saying that this is new stuff. This is old stuff, but it's just. Now these people are, it's evident that more and more of it is permeating. It's it's in our, it's always been in our politics, I believe. It's always been in in every fabric of life, of American way of life. It's just been swept under the rug or hidden or quietly brushed over or passed over like it's not. Really that important. But it is however, when you have people taking notice. To that is the reason why people have trouble getting into housing, to getting into school, to getting jobs, to getting hired in places. To getting in seats like this to hold positions of authority because you have people like this that are controlling that. That narrative and controlling the seats, making sure that. Decent people that will look at people as as equal or at least. Come to some middle ground would run things in a more professional manner than what we have here. So it. Article goes on to say that it hurts the Bonin family that his earliest encounters is with somebody in the public eye like this. That has a powerful seat. So city council members, Neth- Nethia Roman. Paul Queretz, Queretz and Joe Buscagno. Also called for Martinez's resignation. So these are people who they heard the audio tapes, they've seen what's going on and. They want these people to resign. And I have to agree with them, the decision that they're making because this is really crucial. So on Sunday evening. A crowd of protesters gathered near Martinez's home. The independent reporter John Pelz shared a video of the dozens of people outside the building. They were angry in part because I work with black kids in LA, Pelz said. So adding, he was particularly concerned about Martinez. Had previous tried to run for a spot in the local unified school district governing board. So she tried to run and think. What kids go to LA Unified? You'll find a lot of African-American children or black children going to LA Unified, a lot of. A lot of immigrant children, indigenous children, uh the very children that she talked about. Disparagingly. And here she wanted to take a high position, a position in that arena as well, which is. And I wouldn't be surprised if there's some people sitting in seats right now in those positions. That feel are would do the same thing as her. They just haven't gotten caught. And so that's, let me, let me say that. I'm full aware that that this is not old. This is just, she just happened to get caught. That's all it is. Um. So angry in part because of this. So this woman was gonna take a seat in LAUSD in a high position. So the freedom. The ease with which they disparage and demean and talk about black, a black child is disgusting. So the California chapter of NAACP called the resignations of all of those involved Martinez, Sidelio. De Leon and Herrera. This kind of overt racism, if that's what they call it, uh has no place in the political. Um discourse, said the chapter's president, Rick L. Chans- uh uh. Calendar. Um so we clearly know where your heart and mind are and both of them are corroded. With the rust of racism. So. And dehumanizing people. So at a time and our nation is grappling with the rise of hate speech, hate crimes, racist comments and. Have deepened the pain that our communities have endured. So LA deserves better, Padilla said in a statement. So Governor. Gavin Newsom said racist language can do real harm and he he was encouraged to see individuals take responsibility for their actions. So also demanding the council members resignation were labor leaders, indigenous groups, state. Democratic Party and US Congress Adam Schiff and LA Mayor Eric Garcetti. So a lot of people saw this. And they demanded that this this person and these other people involved resign from their seats. So bigotry, violence and the division too. Often live in unseen and unheard places, but have severe consequences on the lives of our fellows, Angelenos. When they are not confronted and left in to infect our public and private lives, Garcetti said in statements. So Martinez. Apologized for her comments in this statement, arguing that they came in a moment of intense frustration and anger. So that's her excuse, but you know, I I would think that it wasn't just anger and frustration. That is just the way she thinks. So in the context of this conversation was concern over the redistricting process. And concern about the potential negative impact it might have on communities of color, she added. So my work speaks for itself. I've worked hard to lead the the city through its most difficult time. Herrera, Sidelio and De Leon have apologized for their comments and their role in conversation. Um I regret appearing to condone and even contribute to the certain insensitive comments made. About a colleague and his family in private, De Leon said. I've reached out to the colleague personally. So while I did not engage in a conversation in question, I was present at the time. During the meeting last year, said Sidelio. It is my instinct to hold others accountable when. They use derogatory and racially diverse divisive language. Clearly I should have intervened at the moment. So the revelation. Comes at a tense time in LA's politics. In November, voters are set to elect a new mayor. With polls showing a tightening race between US Representative Karen Bass, billionaire uh developer Rick Caruso. And several city council members are stepping down as well. So um Latinos make up about half of LA's population. Of about four million. Martinez was elected to the council of two thousand and thirteen. And became its first Latina president in twenty twenty as of two thousand and eighteen. Her district had a primarily Latino population that outnumbered black voters. So The Guardian has contacted. Martinez's office for further clarification and comment, of course, but they probably haven't gotten it. Um. So that is, um I believe it's Mike Bonin, if I said his name right. Yeah, Mike Bonin. He was the one that uh Nuri Martinez was talking about her son. And this is Nuri Martinez who resigned. From her high seat in LA City Council. She was the actual president. And so she was the one that was heard saying the disparaging remarks against um. Mike Bonin's son, who's black and um she also was saying things about. Indigenous people, immigrants, uh Oaxican uh people. From what I learned is Oaxaca had had the black Hispanics or people that have a mix of black African. Uh descent and it's it's clear that in that part of I and that part of, I believe, Mexico. If I was saying it correctly, you guys can correct me on that. That 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 is where you will find most of the darker skin. Mexican people or then just usually the, they say that the people who are the, you know, people who are. Originated, the indigenous people tend to be like darker, darker skin. And so it's just like putting everybody in a really. Uh. A sad light, you know, making people, making people look like they're inferior or something wrong with them because they're. They look a different way, like how she referred to the Oaxican, said that they were Oaxican Korean. The little people, you know, the way she referred to them, making fun of black people, making fun of Korean people that. You know, um Korean, you know, there there's also Asian, La- La- Latino and um. There's a lot of things she was saying that were very hurtful. And so this is why she's stepping down. So I just, I guess I just elaborated a little more on it than maybe the news did. Um. But I was looking at this. This was way like weeks before the news had said anything about it. But I thought it was really sad because here you got, we got a lot of stuff going on already. As if we don't have a lot of things happening right now. We have a lot of things going on. And you would think that they would not. You know, allow for someone to do something like this. Um we will see how this goes. We will definitely see how it goes because it's it's sad that you have people that. That are in high seats, positions like this, that will will say these type of things and just really. Make it bad for a lot of people, you know. So we'll see how far this goes. I'm trying to see if I can. Move her picture up or down. I don't know. So that you could see her face a little more clear. I know you probably see what. Yeah, but yeah, this this is the woman who was caught saying most of the 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 uh. Disparaging remarks, as they say, the disparaging remarks and. Where I I I think it's disgusting, it's gross and it was really mean. And I don't think it was at a time of, there's no excuse. She said it was at a time of intense anger and frustration. Like she's angry or whatever. But if you're angry, there's other ways of expressing your anger. How come it had to come out in a race? Race-based way. What? Why is it that the anger shows is displaying that you you clearly have an issue with people that are black? Is what it seemed like that was more the issue. That that was why she's doing what she's doing, but we shall see how far this goes. Just thinking that this whole thing is is not gonna go away anytime soon. You know, that there's gonna be more to it. And we're gonna hear about it, I'm sure. Yeah, because you know, she's not the only one in in a political seat. That, you know, she just got caught. Now, how many other people? You got people, they don't even get caught. They say stuff. I've seen people say stuff right out for millions of people to see it. And then they turn around and say, oh, I mistook my words. And they don't get rid of them. They are, they just remove them and send them somewhere else or whatever. We we wanna see what happens with this because it says she didn't resign from the seat. She resigned from the position. So that's two different things. She could probably, she probably still getting paid. You know. She's just not, you just don't see her there, her face. So you know, they've gotten bolder. I feel like they're. They're reverting back to the way things used to be where you could just say these things out and nobody would, you wouldn't get fired. You wouldn't get any. You wouldn't get any consequence. It was like accepted. And I feel like that's how they're trying to make this thing go back to the way it was. That's what I believe Make America Great Again was. Really was and Bring America Back Again, back to a time where you can be racist. And you can say things and not get fired. And you can talk about the very people you're supposed to be serving. As if they're like beneath you and inferior. And so that's what that meant to me, you know, and I'm sure it meant that. To a lot of other people who are listening to it. That to a lot of other people who are listening to it, because these are coded words. Are coded phrases that they're using, but they're really mean hate and racism. Bring us back to a time of racism where it's accepted to discriminate and accepted. To belittle people and put them under the bus or to degrade people's race and um. You know, just say horrible things about people's children and and you know, poke fun of people because. They're not, not. The people that you'd want them to be, you know, or want them to look like you or you want them to have the same beliefs or. You know, and it, nobody's a carbon copy of one another. Everybody has different sets of beliefs, um and and it. It just didn't happen overnight, they had an experience that led them to it, I'm sure. So we'll see what happens with this, but I thought found this interesting, so this was in The Guardian. Article and so I just seen it on the news today, I think they just started airing it. About this lady stepping down, but look at her positions, now think of all of the other positions that are high up the ladder. And they just said she was trying to get a seat in L A Unified. And what 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 what? What are most of the uh large percentage of the children are the same background of the people that she just talked horrible about? So I don't think that would fly either, but I bet you, I hate to say this. That is city council. In L A U S D, I think you'd have to do a lot more to find out and to to raise somebody from their position. Even with them harboring this type of, this type of prejudice and and. The things that she said, I bet you'd had to do a lot more to get them out of their seat. And I'm just kinda filling in the gap here for you, L A U S D is nothing nice, is not. It's not like they're angels either, so let me put it out there like. They they have a huge shortage, they're grossly um. You know, uh in a shortage of teachers and staff, the. A lot of times people are not feeling like they're being appreciated, they're overworked and underpaid. Um and then you have people, they want you to take all these classes, they want you to go to school. But you wind up with student loan debt and but you don't have the money to pay it off. You're just paying for the the interest, not the principal. I've heard a lot of stuff, I've seen a lot of stuff, you got people that they'll work for a while and then they they say this is not for me. And they load you up with a lot of kids. And they just kinda cram them in the rooms and they don't even look at what what is the need until far later. And so you have these people that are in seats in L A S D, they they do things. That are probably just as bad as what you're seeing here. And I'm sure they it don't just stop with that institution either, there's other institutions that are uh in of power. That have people like this in in the top seats. And that's the reason why you see some schools won't have books, they won't have adequate supplies. Um cause the people at the top are the ones getting the high pay, they're getting, they making sure their their pockets are lined. Um and the little workers, you're just getting by and that's pretty much how it goes and and there's some schools, they even close. Because they don't have enough money to pay the workers, so and for whatever other reasons involved. So that's on a whole nother video, you just pay, keep your eyes open, you'll hear about some of the. There's some places where the school boards don't even get along. And so that's the school board, she wanted to be honest, probably would have fit right in, I hate to say, but it's bad. Yeah, I'm I'm just giving you a little bit of extra. They just don't just stop with city, city, the city of L A and the county of L A, it's. Everywhere and all those high arenas you look, there's gonna be some bad apples in there, lots of them. That should have been plucked out a long time ago.